This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM. Call the Southampton School Committee meeting to order. I'm Dylan Maudslay, Vice Chair of the Southampton School Committee. Chair John Lumber is not present. Currently present are the other three members of the school committee. We also have Superintendent Vito Perone and Building Principal Lisa Pluto. First matter is approval of the minutes from April 9th, 2025.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Kim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Margaret. Let's take a minute to go through for discussion.
What on earth is that beeping?
Any further discussion? Everyone good?
Good.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries four, nothing. Next item, public comment.
That's a no.
They need to get in line.
Right, one at a time at the microphone.
No more than two minutes. Please don't be repetitive. Circulation of warrants, those are now done online. I believe the last warrants went around about a couple of days ago, and I believe those were finalized yesterday, or the day before, maybe?
I sign something sometimes.
Yeah. Announcements correspondence. Um, hmm.
No.
There was a postcard that went around on the ballot question that went out to all Southampton households. That was the doubt, and I believe it came in yesterday.
I got it today, yeah.
Mine came today.
There's been signs popping around town. There's an election on the 20th, I hear.
There is. I voted today, though. You can vote today. Well, you could vote, you can still vote early tomorrow.
Tomorrow, early voting tomorrow, and then it's Tuesday, the 20th, from noon to eight. Reports, principals' report.
Yes, so the principals' report for May 14th, 2025. Our enrollment is at 481. That is one down from last month. Under student life, we have our third grade students presented their magnet projects to their parents in the cafeteria on April 18th. They also invited some other students from Norris to attend, which was very nice. Firefighters visited classrooms in grades one and three to talk about fire safety. The Berkshire Theater Group is coming to Norris on Friday, May 16th, and they will be performing The Magic Tree House, Pirates Past Noon. Thanks to the generosity of Mary Pope Osborne, students will receive copies of The Magic Tree House Book Number Four and the nonfiction companion Fact Tracker. I think only a couple of grades are getting the book, so it's not everyone. The Norris School Drama Club will be performing for parents on the evening of May 22nd and for students in school on May 23rd.
6:30.
And that'll be great, now that we have a drama club again. Kindergarten orientation was held on the evening of Wednesday, May 7th. And last day for preschool is June 5th. The preschool picnic is also scheduled for that day at Conan Park. Field Day is scheduled for June 9th with a rain date of the 11th. Step Up Day for Grade Six is scheduled for June 12th. And the last day of school for students is Friday, June 13th, and it is a half-day. We will finish MCAS testing tomorrow. Last session, Grade Five Science, so exciting. I think the kids are toast at this point. They are done with MCAS, especially fifth grade, because they take ELA Math and Science. The last round of Fastbridge testing will be conducted May 19th to the 23rd for kindergarten and the 27th to the 30th for grades two through six. Teachers have professional development time on Friday, May 23rd. Students have a half-day of school. And then, under staff news, we celebrated Mrs. Sue Reposa at the Log Cabin on Wednesday, April 30th. Mrs. Reposa is the recipient of the Harold Grinspoon Teaching in Excellence Award. She's a third-grade teacher. It was a lot of fun. And then, the town-approved capital committee recommendations for our request for new doors in our school gym that leads the outside, and replacing the carpet with tile in the two preschool classes and two kindergarten classrooms. The total amount is about $55,000, so we are appreciative of that. Thank you very much.
Questions? Superintendent's report.
So the first couple of items on the superintendent's report are just FYIs. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents provided an update on analysis on the budget, the state budget as it moves forward, and that was just for information for you to see what MAS has to say about the iteration that we're currently on. Of course, there's a lot more work to be done at the state level to finalize that. The second piece is that Durham, the bus company that we use, they were purchased by a company, a national company, and they said that there will be no problems, issues, concerns. We'll be moving forward in a positive way. We have a two-year extension on the contract with Durham, and Dawn Scaparati did a wonderful job negotiating from 4% down to 3.5 for this upcoming school year, and then down to 3 the school year after that. So kind of the most important piece there is there was only one bidder when we originally went to that budget, that item for bid, and we hope that as we move forward, maybe there's others interested, so we can have some competition there. Really good news from the Office of Public School Monitoring. When we first started back in July, there was some concerns from the Office of Public School Monitoring that the findings and the determinations that were made were not acted upon previously. We have subsequent, subsequent man, I say we, but truly Amy Drake, Michael Forgette, and the principals have done an excellent job to respond to the findings of the prior monitoring report, and we are now on time and current and getting ready for another review in another year. There's another spot on the agenda for the comparison of '24, '25, but I'd like to just take it as part of my report, and it will just come up later in the agenda, if that's all right. I bring your attention to this chart, and what this chart is, it captures three claim functions for DESI: extraordinary relief, special ed increment, and circuit breaker. All those things are defined there, but ultimately, it's about the state trying to reimburse us for monies that we use for special ed costs, which we all know are going up. The reason I bring this to the school committee tonight is because Michael and Amy have done an amazing job of meticulously going through claims, identifying services that we can claim as reimbursable. And if you look at the last column, the difference between '25 and '24 is $308,890. So in each of those buckets, whether it's extraordinary relief, sped increment, or circuit breaker, the work that Amy and Michael have done have netted revenues that were not netted previously. And it's not because we have more special ed students now. It's because they looked at the services, they identified where we can make claims, and they did the work, the hard work, to identify and claim it from the state. So Norris is standing to receive $308,890 more than they have in the past year, and that's all because of the conscientious work that Michael and Amy are doing. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. If anybody has any questions, I'm certainly able to ask, answer them, but really, it's about those three buckets: extraordinary relief, special ed increment, and circuit.
Look at that one for high school, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So this is all because they found the stuff that Ed did, the paperwork, to get the claims back, where that wasn't necessarily done previously.
It's a lot of work. It is a lot of work, and I do not, I intend not to discourage those who were before us, but I want to recognize
Right.
the work that was done by the team that is currently in place. And they're doing a great job, and it's being reflected in the revenues that we're receiving.
Yeah, that's great.
Of course, we all, we talked about the town meeting in Southampton and the fact that the election, the ballot is on the 20th. Oh, this is a good one, advocacy. One of the things that we're concerned about, everybody's concerned about, is the funding from the national level and the fact that there's uncertainty on what we're going to receive in our title grants and our IDEA grants. The other concern is that the rural and the regionals aren't receiving funding at the same level, if you will, as the eastern part of the state and some of the more affluent communities, or the more needy communities. Our enrollment, our, and I mean by that the rural and the regionals, are down, though Hampshire Regional enrollment is not down. But still, the funding mechanism is based on enrollment, and because of that, we, as rural districts, are not receiving the same funding. And so there's an opportunity for advocacy, and we have two students, Principal Hoos, Dawn Scaparati, myself, and Margaret are going to present at Northampton High School with six other schools. We each have about five minutes and a slide to share, and we are going to talk about the challenges that are faced by rural and regional districts, and we're going to make some points on how the state might remediate those challenges and help us recruit some of the revenue losses that we face because of our situation. And that is on the 27th of May, and it's at Northampton High School. The last thing is the skinny budget, and I'm using a quote from the MAS, the federal FY26 budget proposal from the executive branch is called the skinny budget. And what they said, and this is very good for us, that Title I is going to remain intact and Title, or, excuse me, the IDEA grants are going to remain intact. So we receive both of those grants in different measures in our five districts. The only thing that's really going to be pulled away from us are Title III funds, and that's not as significant a hit. So my anxiety level dropped quite a bit when I saw that, and I'm feeling much better about things as we move forward. And that's it. Any questions? I'm happy to field them.
Questions? Thank you very much. Chair's report, John didn't give anything to me. Hampshire Regional?
Um, we've been working on pretty much policy. That's what we've been doing most of, I would say.
Questions? Okay. PTO?
PTO met last night in the library. Most of it was, they're actually starting to look ahead to the fall for gearing up for some of the fundraising that they start in the fall. They have, that work on that starts well before the fall. That was, that was most of the meeting. They have one more meeting this school year, and it will be on June 10th at 6:30 in the Norris Library. That's it.
Are they going to be working the holiday bazaar again?
They are, although they're, none of them wanted to say the B-word last night yet, so they were calling it the festival that happens in the fall, because it's a tremendous amount of work, and so they're not quite ready to start actually naming.
Are they going to call it the apple pie festival for the whole year and then go to?
Well, they should just call it the apple pie festival.
Agreed.
You know. Tradition, I guess, doesn't matter anymore.
Any questions? None. School council?
We are this close
Yeah, we're that close.
to finishing the school improvement plan. Can you get me a copy?
Yes, yes.
I'm trying to copy, so then there's a meeting with the instructional leadership team next week, and then school council, or week after, I can't remember.
Right, the 27th we meet again.
And then, yeah, and then school council meets again, and we're going to finalize everything, and it's looking good.
Great.
Yeah.
Collaborative updates. They haven't, their last meeting was prior to our last meeting. It was actually the same night as our last meeting. They meet again the end of the month. There's been a lot of emailing going on back and forth. They're continuing to face pretty big budget issues over there, as is everyone. It all trickles down. School budgets are getting impacted, and they're cutting services and trying to reimagine how they do things that impacts CES as well. So the executive director's been holding listening sessions. I think they're hoping to hold that, at this point, that they're done with staff layoffs and they're figuring out restructuring, but it's not a happy time over there. Anyone have questions on that? Select Board update. I don't have anything. I would just say that the town meeting happened last week. Their budget is, as everyone here is aware, that the budget's moving forward for an override vote on next Tuesday, the 20th, Town Hall, voting from noon to eight. Failure to pass the override would result in pretty tremendous cuts at Norris, so.
12.5% of the staff.
12.5% of staff, equivalent of 10 full-time employees. Budget. Budget Finance Team update.
Dawn is currently at the Masbo Conference. She is in Eastern Mass, I don't remember the town, maybe you can remember, but she's doing work and collaborating with her peers. So ultimately, the bottom line, and I'm really excited about this, is that we, we and again, my team, Dawn and her, the business office, is really making amazing progress. We have finished, and I know this is not a municipal thing, it's a regional thing, but we finished excess and deficiency for Chester Goshen. It's been submitted, and there was actually money we were able to apply to the budget up there, which is awesome. Hampshire Regional will be done at the end of the month, the E&amp;D. I don't know that they'll get the return that Chester Goshen did, but we're going to be done and back on track with respect to E&amp;D. The three municipal town end-of-year reports are completed, and Dawn is going to submit them this week, which is huge for us. And then probably the biggest news, the audits for '23 and '24 are starting, and '25 is due the end of March in '26, and we are going to be on track to make that deadline. I am so proud of the work that Dawn and her team are doing. It's a grind. It's, it's, it's really challenging, being dragged back by an anchor of fiscal years past while you're currently doing your work in the FY, and then you're projecting into the next year. But she's keeping her head above water. She's getting the work done, and we are getting back on track. We have a couple of meetings coming up with DESI, where we're going to be able to report some things that haven't been reported in a couple of years. And I really couldn't be happier or prouder of the team that we have in place. You know, I'm just going around for a ride. We got Michael and Amy doing their thing, and we got Dawn and her team doing their thing, and it's really exciting.
Questions?
Just one thing I want to say, though. John, since John's not here, I forgot. We had an ADC meeting, too.
Oh.
And it was superintendent evaluation stuff. So just a reminder, if you guys haven't done your evaluation, the superintendent, it's due tomorrow.
Yeah, that guy, I did.
Yeah, so, just a reminder. That's it.
It was just that link we had to fill out, right?
The Google form, yeah.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. That sheet that's gone around the past, I appreciate everything you just said. I believe you. I'm a visual guy. Which, the one that had the ongoing track, can we, for next meeting, can we get an updated version of that with the checks, what's been completed?
Absolutely. In fact, I don't remember which meeting it was. Oh, it was a town meeting in West Hampton, that's right. We, we updated that on the website, so I can share that quite easily with everyone, and that's the most up-to-date document that we're communicating with DESI, and it entails kind of the issues that were identified, where we stand with those issues, and the progress we're making. So I can certainly share that with everybody in my, my next report.
And where are we at with fiscal year '25 actuals?
That, we're, we're going to be in great place with that as we finish '24. And what I mean by that is the most complicated actuals to deal with are the Hampshire Regional, and so once we get that in place, we are going to be on track to get '25 where it needs to be, and we're going to be making progress within that. That was one of the concerns that people had, is, well, why don't we, why don't we have actuals that we can compare? Well, we couldn't do that until we closed out of those prior years, and so that's the anchor that I feel around our neck. So we are, we are on it. We are focused, and I have all faith that Dawn is going to be where we need to be with '25 for the benchmarks that we have to hit.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Dr. Perone, Special Education Revenue, we already covered that, correct? Great. Nurse Leader stipend and posting?
Yes, this is just an FYI. There were some issues, concerns last year when that district-level position was cut and changed to a stipend position. Sam Pease, who was the nurse at New England, has taken on the role of the nurse leader and fulfilled the obligations with respect to state reporting and all those things, professional development that she has needed to do. She's been supported by Michael Forgette around curriculum and PD, and one of the things I did this year so that we didn't fall into the trap of last year was give voice to the nurses. So I sent a Google form out in January or February, I believe, and solicited some feedback from them around how things were going. Are you receiving the support you need? Do you need any of the resources? Is there or are there comments, concerns that you want addressed as we move forward? And I was quite clear with them at one of the PDs this year that the budget just doesn't allow a return of that position. It would be, it would have been irresponsibility to try to push that forward in addition to a change from a souser to the new model. So they were good with that. I haven't heard any complaints. Now, I might not hear that, but I have gotten feedback. I will be at the PD at the end of May with the nurses, with Sam, to again hear from them, give them voice, and to assure them that we're going to move forward as best we can with the stipend position. It's posted, which is what this is all about. I don't know who yet is going to apply for that position, but once we fill it, I will then come around to each of the school committees for approval, as we must per MGL. So this is really just informational.
Are there any changes to the job description?
The job description is pretty comprehensive. The fact that Michael is supporting Sam and that she is also doing the job during the school day was the concern that the nurses had, but as we move through the school year and they recognize that, you know, things were different, and they were giving voice, and they were given an opportunity to add whatever questions, concerns that they had. Things, I think, have settled down a little bit, and we're moving forward in a positive way.
So are there any changes to the job description?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So the same woman who does it this year is not wanting to do it for next year, or it just has to be posted regardless?
It's posted regardless. It's a one, it's a one-year.
It's a one-year thing, okay.
It's a stipend position, so.
Gotcha.
I don't know that anyone else is interested.
Yeah.
But I don't anticipate any undue stress and rankle of the governor.
Right.
Vito, thank you for giving the nurses an opportunity, because they haven't always had that in the past, and it was really important for you to do that, and I've heard that they appreciated it.
Thank you. Yeah, and one of the things I do is that when I'm in the building, that's one of the stops I make, is I go to the nurses' office and say hello, just to check in, see how they're doing, and so they know who I am. So I think it's all part of moving forward, you know, in a better way than they weren't, so.
Questions? Comments? Thank you. Business office intern job description?
All right, I'm going to channel my inner Dawn, but I'm going to be much more succinct than she is.
I'm going to tell her.
The, the funding for this position is from the expanded forensic work, so this is no extra money needed for this position. But what it is, is we have an opportunity to hire an intern that can do some specific work around, if you look at the job description that she put in there, closing out fiscal years and entering ledger work and doing some of the work around preparation for the audit and for the end-of-year reports as we move forward. The key is that this person was trained formally at a fellowship that prepares the person for the work that's being done, and it's a $25 an hour as opposed to a $40, $50, $60 an hour person. It's a young, young person still in school, going to be a senior, but has the fellowship and training that is going to allow Dawn to put the person to work in a way that's going to give us some real traction right away. And so we were told by our attorney that we need to bring the job description around, share it with everybody, get it approved, and then move forward.
Motion to approve the job description.
Motion to approve made by Kim. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Jen. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Sains. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Field trip approval to Albany, New York, maybe?
Yes, this is definitely a maybe. So we had a hard time finding a nurse, and then we had a hard time contracting with buses. The bus company that we originally were going to use, bus broke down, isn't being fixed, so we're still searching. But I figured, bring it to you, hopefully get the approval, and then if it happens, we can make it happen at the last minute, and if not, at least we had it approved. So it would be June 11th to Albany, New York, to Five Wits, which fifth grade has gone there for the past few years. It's a problem-solving skills and teamwork. They'll be tested in order to make it through like a puzzle game room type of thing where you find your way out. Three adventures while beating the score of other teams. The kids love it. They have a fantastic time. So I'm just looking for your approval to go out of state.
Motion to approve field trip to Five Wits for the current fifth graders on June 11th?
Second.
Jen, seconded by Kim. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Second reading, Title IX Policy Reversion Update 2022.
Yes. Thank you. I, in my, in my updates and running, running record kind of of what I do, the last time, I shared with everyone the, the language and the letter from Attorney DuBrye, because I know there were some questions about it, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it. If not, I would share that and the financial issues with this body, so you guys can take a look at it. But it really helps put in perspective the fact that Title IX is Title IX, and we have to acquiesce and do what we need to do with respect to it. I am currently involved in a Title IX investigation as a Title IX coordinator, and we are adhering to the 2020 reiteration.
So what's in our packet is what we looked at last month that, as a first read, we were okay with.
It is.
So nothing's changed.
Nothing has changed. The only thing I wanted to share is that that letter was available for you to read.
Right, yeah, I remember.
I remember that last time. Is there a motion to approve Title IX Policy Reversion Update to, so this would be to approve policies AC-R, ACA, and ACABGBAA, and revert them back to the 2002, previous of the first reading at the school committee meeting of April 9th, 2025. And I think we can do this as a consent agenda of all three.
So moved.
More, motion made by Margaret?
Second.
Seconded by Kim. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. No abstentions. Motion carries three to one. Um, no abstentions. Motion carries three to one. Uh, does anybody else have any business to bring before this committee which cannot wait till the next regularly-scheduled meeting? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Jen. All those, discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:29 PM.
Thanks so much.